Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Before we call to order, I just wanted to make a few comments. Everyone probably knows about the passing of Wally Edgerton.
No.
Yeah, Wally passed away. Was it day before yesterday? About 2:00, I think it was. There's been a couple newspaper articles about it. For me personally, he was a dear friend, my political guide. We ran for city council together. We helped organize the city. He's been a dear friend. He has influenced this city in ways, I think, that will be felt for years to come. And I will dearly miss him. And I'm not sure who here personally knew him, but his influence on the city and the individuals in the city will last for quite a while. So I wanted to honor him tonight and acknowledge him and his contributions to the city as a member of the city, as a member of the city council, and as a friend. And dedicate this meeting in his honor. So that's for me personally. I can't speak for the commission as a whole. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment or in regards to that at all?
I'll make a comment as well. I agree with everything Commissioner Thomas has said. Mr. Edgerton, Councilmember Edgerton, and also Mrs. Edgerton are also, I've become friends with them over the years. And he was my councilman in my district, and he was a good man. He did a lot of good things throughout his whole life, things that we're even unaware of, and has made a difference for a lot of people. And I was over there yesterday, made a visit to Mrs. Edgerton. And I just, for those of you who consider, we always say we remember people in our thoughts and prayers, and I just ask you to do that at this time, for their family needs that at this time.
Okay. Well, Wally would want things to go on, so we will do that. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Should we do a roll call?
We will do that after the --
Oh, okay. I'll turn the time over to Bob for, sorry, for an important issue tonight.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This evening, as we all know, Commissioner Folsom has resigned from the commission. We do have a new commissioner that's been appointed or has been nominated, and tonight he'll be sworn in and be participating in the meeting. Mark Doty is the new commissioner, and Jennifer will swear him in at this time.
I, Mark Doty. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend -- The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon. Which I am about to enter.
So. Lone woman. I asked him to maybe give a little quick bio on himself. Is it now appropriate time or later, or when? Can we do, can we do that right now? Maybe you can tell us a little bit about yourself and why in the world you want to be up here.
My name is Mark Doty. I've lived here in Menifee for the last five and a half years. I'm married with three kids, and that's probably the biggest reason why I'm doing this, is to ensure that as this city grows, it's grown correctly and smartly, and that my kids can live here and enjoy their life here. So it's probably the biggest reason why.
Well, welcome. And we look forward to serving with you and getting to know you a little bit better. We'll go ahead and do the roll call then.
Yes. Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioner Carwin.
Present.
Commissioner Phillips. Vice Chair Sobek.
Here.
Chair Thomas.
Here. We'll go ahead and stand for the flag salute.
Stand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there any other agenda modifications or?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have any presentation, no presentations? Do we have any public comments?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay. We'll move on to approval of the meetings, minutes from the meetings on May 13th. Do we have a motion of approval?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second. You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have the consent calendar? Do we need to act on that, just approve it blankly, or how do we do that? We've never had a consent calendar item. Maybe we can talk about that.
No, you just, I mean, if you want, you can, but you can just go ahead and essentially approve it with a motion.
So just to clarify, we'll have no meetings in July is basically what it's talking about.
That's correct. The council, the planning commission, and any other commissions will be dark in the month of July, and this was made by decision, the termination of the city council.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Doty, you got a month off. You just started. Okay. Then we'll go ahead. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I will. I'd like to make a motion. We adopt resolution number PC-15-215 and resolution number PC.
We just adopt, we just approve the consent calendar.
Just moved to approve the consent calendar.
I just moved that we approve the consent calendar for tonight.
Second. You have a second, all in favor? Aye. That moves us on to the first public hearing, which is the amendment to municipal code regarding the marijuana dispensaries cultivation and processing anywhere within the city. What's that?
Number six.
Yes. Hold on just a minute.
It was none, yeah, there were none.
Yeah, there were none. So let's go ahead, and do we have a staff report for this item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This item has come before you two previous times, January 28th and February 25th of this year. At that time, the commission, at the most recent meeting in February, the commission had asked for additional information that the staff was to come back and provide to you. That has occurred. We've scheduled that. Mr. Leclair has done the research. He is the one who's put this report and the ordinance together, or the chapter together. I'd ask Charles to review it with the commission, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Hopefully the mic is on now. As was just mentioned, this is a development code amendment that will introduce and place into the city's municipal code a chapter dealing with medical marijuana dispensaries, cultivation, and processing. We've added additional language to what you've seen in the past based upon the research that you asked staff to do. We found out certain things, and so we've added information into the material that you're going to be asked to decide upon tonight. As the director just noted, this has been before you twice before, on January 28th and February 25th of this year. At the 25th meeting, you asked for additional information, and it was tabled until staff had the time to do the research requested. Oops, what happened? What was asked for was, this, at the 25th meeting, the commission asked for information dealing with crime stats, dealing with marijuana, the definition of qualified patient, an analysis or summary of Senate Bill 420, a copy of Health and Safety Code 11362.5, and a survey of the surrounding cities and communities and how they're addressing the issue. All of this information was provided within your staff reports. In addition to the information that you asked for in the, it seems to be jumping two slides at a time. Okay. In addition to the information that you asked for, when we went to the county to find out what they were doing, they informed us, and their board of supervisors have adopted an ordinance that would allow for 12 mature or immature plants per person, per parcel, up to a maximum of two individuals per parcel, or 24 plants. That if you do grow marijuana, that there are requirements for setback, security, and screening standards, and that to violate the code, there's a $10 fine per plant above the established limit for the first offense. Beyond that, the fines go higher and higher. In addition, while we were researching what the county was doing, certain information became known to us. The issue of mobile cultivation. That's where individuals are taking mobile homes, gutting them, and then they are using them as nurseries. What this does is circumvents the parcel restrictions that are associated in code enforcement activities. If you can, typical activity for code enforcement is that you come out to a property and you see a violation, you warn the property owners, you've got X period of time to correct the problem. With a mobile cultivation, what they do is pick up the trailer, move it down the street to a different parcel, and you have to start the process over, because it's a new parcel, a new address. So that's an issue that was raised. The county also discussed the issue of restricting it from single-family versus multifamily. The commission had some questions about who gets to go first in the past, and so we've addressed that issue. Third is that a qualified patient or caregiver must reside on the property where the marijuana is being grown, that all the plants must be reasonably secured against access by minors and/or to prevent theft, and that convicted felons, parolees, or probationers are not allowed to live on the property where the marijuana is being grown. These items have been added to the draft ordinance that's presented to you tonight. A final issue that had been brought to staff's attention was the fact that individuals now are using various chemical processes to process and extract ingredients out of the marijuana plants. That extraction process is a manufacturing process, is something that can be fairly dangerous. And what they do is they extract certain things from the marijuana, and they either use it on that property or they sell it to others so that it can be used. For example, in the staff report, we use it as a food additive. These issues have been brought into the material that you're being asked to consider tonight. The chapter is basically the same as what you've seen twice before with the exceptions that are highlighted in yellow. We added the "and processing" to the title so that the issue of processing is known right up front. Sections 010 to 050 are chapters, are reiterations of ordinances that have been adopted and been in place with the city for a long period of time. The new sections of the code, 060, marijuana cultivation, something you've seen twice before, and the new section, marijuana processing, is a new section for you to consider tonight. In your staff report, staff gives you three alternatives. First alternative is where the cultivation of marijuana is simply prohibited. The second alternative is where it's allowed, but only allowed indoors. The third alternative is allowed both indoor and outside. If marijuana cultivation is allowed, these, this is a small summary of what's required in the code, that at least one cardholder or caregiver must reside on the site, no felon, parolee, or probationer may reside on the site, two mature or four immature plants are allowed per person, per lot, up to a maximum of two individuals. If it's allowed indoor, there isn't a screening or separation issue, but if it's allowed outdoors, then there is screening and separation requirements. Just like the county, there's a requirement that it be secured against minors and theft. Mobile cultivation is expressly prohibited. Registration of cultivation is required with the property owner's signature that identifies that they're aware that the, if it's a tenant, if it's a renter, is that the property owner is aware that this activity is taking place, and that it's only allowed on properties that have an existing single-family residential unit on it. The new section, 070, deals with the manufacturing, distilling, or otherwise processing of mature or immature marijuana plants to extract byproducts. In all the versions that we have in front of you tonight, they use that as expressly The issues that you still need to decide, other than alternative 1, 2, and 3, is whether or not you will allow amortization, and if you do allow amortization, whether you want to have the one year, which is identified within the draft code, a shorter period or a longer period in order to allow individuals to go from what they may currently have to the numbers that would be consistent with the proposed code. As you are aware, every development code amendment must be found to be consistent with the goals and policies of the adopted general plan. Goals and policies germane to the discussion are within the staff report noted on page 16 of 18. These include goals and policies from the elements of land use, housing, community design, and economic development. As is customary with these kind of reports, staff puts within the report an illustration of how the proposed ordinance is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan. In the material you have in your staff report, we give both an illustration of how it does conform to goals and policies and how it can be found not to conform to goals and policies, thus giving you information if you want to choose alternative 1 that says prohibit cultivation within the community. Before you is also a draft environmental evaluation, a notice of exemption. Staff believes that this project, this code amendment would be exempt. Your commission resolution forwards a recommendation that the council find that the proposed ordinance would also be exempt from further environmental review. Staff would like to point out, at the end of your staff report is a recent press release from the, press release from the sheriff's office dated May 4th addressing marijuana cultivation. And the commission should be aware that we have received two letters, both in opposition to, they should be in your folders, both in opposition to this ordinance, which would mean in favor of adopting an ordinance that would prohibit the cultivation of marijuana. What staff is asking you to do is conduct the public hearing, and then following that close of that public hearing, adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 15199 forwarding a recommendation that the city find development, that the city council find development code amendment 2014-256 exempt, and that the council adopt the ordinance as recommended within the resolution, as modified by the commission meeting which alternative you choose and which amortization, if any, you decide, what length of amortization, if any, you decide to allow. With that, I will attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. I have some questions, but I'll have the rest of the commission go first. Did you want to start? Did you have, well, Mike, did you want to, we'll start with you. Did you have any questions? What happens at this point, if you have any technical questions of staff, or not to discuss opinions at this point, we'll have time later, but just any questions, technical staff of the presentation or the ordinance?
The only question I have is about regarding the multifamily. I saw the separation of single-family and multifamily, but in the review, it had only mentioned single-family, indoor and outdoor. Was there any restrictions on multifamily?
Right, yeah. What we were attempting to do, if we err, then we need to correct that. What we're attempting to do is limit it so that it can only be allowed upon a property with a single-family residential unit, not multiple family.
That's the clarification I was looking for. Thank you.
Mr. Leclair, first of all, I want to thank you for the staff report and going the extra mile and getting us some better information so we can make a good decision tonight. And then again, that they can, we have public comment, and that would be nice to hear. You made a, you said that the county supervisors adopted, I thought it was a propose, and then they're in the middle of working on it, from what I read.
They've, they have introduced it, and it's anticipated in June to receive its second reading.
It's not been.
Correct. It's not formally gone through the whole process. Correct.
Okay. All right, that was what I wanted to make clear. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
That's all.
Commissioner Carwin, Phillips.
I have a couple. One, depending on which plan we adopt, which, 1, 2, or 3, if it is one of them, or any of, any of them will include making the mobile, the mobile cultivation illegal, correct? Any three of them?
Correct.
So if someone has a mobile cultivation trailer or motor home, and they're sitting on Lot A, and you, code enforcement or police catch them, what is the punishment to the landowner, and what is the punishment to the driver of the vehicle, or the owner of the vehicle?
It's the responsibility of the property owner. Through code enforcement, the property owner is responsible for everything that happens on their property.
So are they cited, and others, what's the fine for, for mobile cultivation? So I have an empty lot, and I said, yeah, park the thing there, go ahead and grow in your mobile home, or your motor home. What would happen to me if I was a property owner?
It would be up to the code enforcement division as to whether or not they ticket you, cite you, or whether or not they pursue it in a, at a higher level. And that would be through consultation with the city attorney and the very nature of the extent. If you've got 25 trailers, and they're all bursting full, you probably would go with a heavier, heavier process than a simple citation.
Do, council, do we have any existing established procedures for a fine punishment, or what is, what is the city's policy as far as what you're going to do?
So we have the ability to utilize administrative citations, utilize nuisance abatement, utilize even the criminal proceedings as well if we wanted to, but it's sort of a balancing of factors. You look at, you know, whether or not somebody violated the ordinance knowingly or not, and sometimes in that case, you would just give them a warning letter, and then you'll come back, and you'll see if it's been remedied or not. But we have the whole spectrum of remedies available to us in dealing with these violations.
So we're, we're here not deciding on what the punishment is, but my, the reason for asking that is, so someone has a motor home on a lot, and he gets a warning, he moves it to another lot, he moves it to another lot, what's to motivate them to stop and cease what they're doing, other than, they're not going to care about a warning letter or a $50 fine? So.
Well, there, there's two ways to look at it. One, the property owner themselves would be subject to those fines, and they get progressive of those fines or whatever other actions, and it gets progressively higher each and every time. Plus, the way this is written, the individual growing will have some consequences as well. So once you've moved the trailer on, you could cite, if you could find that individual, you could cite that individual as well. And then whether they move it next door or down the block, if it's still in the city, it would be a second cite, a third cite, and so forth from there.
Okay. Okay. Did you have a question?
Yes, I had one. I had some friends down in San Diego that were talking about this issue without my asking them, and they were talking about processing labs being there, because they could go from the east part of the county, San Diego County, where the Indian reservations are in Cleveland, and then bring their products into town, more notably El Cajon and San Diego. And I was wondering if we could include language that dealt with processing. As you know from your research, you can get processing labs through the internet, and a lot of these mobile labs, I mean, manufacturing dispensaries or whatever, they can jettison a lot of their side products out in the back country and bring the finished product inside. My concern is that we put language in there that addresses marijuana processing into the various resins and strains, that we include that in all three of those alternatives, and have that also as a prohibition. I know in San Diego County, they have a real problem with these mobile labs. And then elsewhere in the country, you've heard that most of them get blown up, burned up, or what have you.
And it's intended that in all three alternatives, the paragraph that you would find in the middle of 11 of 18 that says manufacturing, distilling, processing, or otherwise manipulating mature or immature marijuana plants, blah, 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 is expressly prohibited. So that, that provision is, although it's only stated in alternative 2 and 3, it would be advantageous to put it in the first alternative as well, where it's, where cultivation is expressly prohibited, but I see the point, that you may have a situation where we're not cultivating it, we're just processing it. So if we include that paragraph in the prohibition section, if you go that direction, it will address the issue that the commissioner just raised.
Yes, my concern was the mobile aspect.
But whether it's stationary or mobile, if you're manufacturing, it still would apply.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, is the commission okay then with him? Well, we'll talk about that. That's an item we're going to have to address.
Right.
Any other questions? I have another, I have, we'll go ahead, do you have another question?
Oh, no.
Okay. I have a question here. If we turn to page 2 of 18, I'm a little confused. It talks about a qualified patient, says on the last paragraph, a qualified patient per SB 420 means a person who's entitled to the protections of Section 11362.5, the Health and Safety Code, but who does not have an identification card issued pursuant to this article. So there's the Compassionate Use Act, which on, but then there's the card, is the card issued by the state? I guess I'm confused as far as a qualified patient.
What this is trying to tell you is that regardless of whether or not you have a card, if you qualify per the other standards that would give you a card, then you are still exempt from being cited.
And the card's issued by the state?
County.
By the county?
County.
Oh, it's by the county, okay.
Voluntarily.
Voluntarily, okay. So what it's saying is you can be a qualified patient, which if we adopt number 2 or 3, and there's a requirement that a qualified patient must be in the home, then they become a qualified patient by, on page 3 of 8, by doing A, B, and C. Is that correct?
By following the state law, correct.
Okay.
They must meet the criteria established in the state law.
Okay, so this is state law, okay. Okay, so that was one question there. Another question is, let me find my third question here. Maybe that was it. I had, there's one more. Well, okay, the question on page 12 of 18, and this is under scenario 2, alternative 2, which is allowing cultivation but only indoors. And if you go to page 12 of 18, at the bottom, it talks about cultivation of marijuana shall be prohibited within 500 feet of sensitive land uses such as parks, churches, yada, yada. Is that 500 feet from the nearest edge property line, or what is it? Is it from the pot plant itself, or what are we, what are we talking here? How do we define that?
I would interpret that as from the structure in which, because it's indoor, to the nearest edge of where the activity typically takes place. So if it's a gym, it would be from the wall of the home to the wall of the gym. You can put it in there if you want, property line to property line, so that you make that distinction, but it's up to the commission, it's up to the council as to whether or not you, you make that, that, because that could add significant separation restriction.
Well, yeah, I'm not, I think I'll leave it to staff to decide, but my only concern was there's a home right next to a park, a daycare, whatever, and he's going, well, you know, the edge of my property is 500 feet from here, so is, maybe if we leave it vague, it's enough to prosecute if we leave it vague, or is it better to leave, define where the limits are? Where the property line to property line, building to building?
Either way, it's perfectly fine. It gives some flexibility, but 500 feet is, you know, one and a, one and two-thirds football field. It's a pretty good separation distance. Other issues are probably more impactful than that particular issue. Where the property line to property line, building to building?
Either way, it's perfectly fine. It gives some flexibility, but 500 feet is, you know, one and two-thirds of football fields. It's a pretty good separation distance. Other issues are probably more impactful than that particular issue. And if the city has the flexibility, if it finds that it's not a problem, then they can be more liberal and use the interpretation I just gave of structure to structure. If they want to be much more strict, then they can go property line to property line. Either one is available to the city, as long as they're consistent in how they apply.
Commissioner Kerwin, did you have a comment?
I did. One thing that jumps out at me seems to be a little bit of a conflict between whether or not a tenant would be allowed to cultivate over the objection of a landlord. It would seem like if we adopt an ordinance that permits cultivation and the landlord doesn't want to allow it, would they have an action against the landlord? So what I would like to see in at least, I don't think it's germane to alternative one, but alternative two and three, I'd just like to see a line in there protecting landlords who are permitted to ban cultivation at their own discretion. If they own a property and want to lease it out to a tenant, the language is very clear that a tenant living in a property owned by somebody else would be permitted to cultivate under two and three. If the landlord who's renting the property wanted to object to that, they couldn't rely on the fact that it's permitted by the city of Menifee to override the landlord's objection.
I'll have to defer to the city attorney for that because it's my understanding that landlord-tenant rules are such that since we put in that to register, which the code requires that you register, that in order to file your registration, the property owner must sign that they are aware that this is going on. If the property owner elects not to sign that they are aware, therefore saying, "I don't want you to do that on my property," then they would be in violation of this code and the city would go out to that individual or the property owner and take code enforcement action.
I think being aware of an activity and ratifying that activity are two different things. And I think it could be proven that, you know, if you've got videotape of the landlord walking around touching the plants, and then later on they say, hey, I never signed that form saying I knew about it, it would seem that an additional piece of language would have to be that the landlord approves of it within their property. That seems to be, it's a property right that I would like to see preserved and specified.
Well, I believe it's already in there that the landlord or the property owner has to give their approval for it.
Is that, where is that language?
How about beginning of 13 to second paragraph, end 13 to 18, "Prior to commencing the cultivation, growing or allowing to grow of marijuana, the property owner shall register such cultivation where the individuals commencing cultivation, growing, or allowing is not the property owner, that those individuals shall register such cultivation, growing or allow of the growing of marijuana. On forms available within the city, offices, and such registration shall include a signed, notarized acknowledgement from the property owner that they are aware of and approve such cultivation, growth, or allowance to grow."
Perfect, that's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, one question with that. It says, "That, slant, those individuals." Now, which one are you referring to? The growers or the property owner?
The growers.
The growers, okay. So it still leaves the property owner vulnerable, the landlord vulnerable, it seems to me.
I don't believe it does because the landlord has to give their permission. And even if, generally speaking, something is allowed on a property pursuant to a municipal code, the landlord can still prohibit it with the terms of the lease. So, I mean, that's what CCNRs do all the time, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that's exactly my concern.
Or the terms of the lease.
So this is not a constitutional right, a free speech, or any other issue that could override a landowner's, like a renter cannot say, Asian people cannot rent from me, that's illegal.
Correct.
So, but he can say, you cannot cultivate, process, or sell marijuana.
There's no law that would prohibit this prohibition from being put into a lease.
All right, in the same way you can prohibit having dogs in a property that you lease.
Any other questions? Okay, then we will open the public hearing at 7:35. Was this properly noticed?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay, and published. Do we have public speakers on this call?
We do. Chuck Ruder?
Hello, the concern I have is Prop. 215. As far as I'm concerned, if the city follows Prop. 215, I don't have a problem with it. But if you try to prohibit everything, I won't have a problem with it. Understand? I'm against people making money on this stuff. And that's what you're talking about with the mobile homes and all that stuff. That people making money, the money guard action. The people who need a medication, who are not doing that, should not be punished because of what other people might be doing. So again, if you follow Prop. 215, you'd be doing a good job. Otherwise, you won't be. Thank you.
Lanny Swardlow?
Good evening, my name's Lanny Swardlow with Marijuana Prohibition Project, Brownie Mary Democratic Club. The county drafted this ordinance, their cultivation ordinance, because they were concerned about large-scale grows. And they wanted to be able to have a handle on them and laws in which they would be able to go after large-scale grows. They recognized that patients needed, had the right to have at least some kind of access to medicinal marijuana. I was involved with both as former supervisor Stone's office and current supervisor Jeffrey's office in the drafting of this ordinance. This ordinance is not music to our ears. There are parts we would like to change, but for most patients, this will be a workable ordinance that the county has drafted that will allow them adequate supplies of medicinal marijuana. The ordinance allows 12 plants per person, and an outdoor grow, it should be able to provide them with enough medicine for the entire year. And this would include people who use it for edibles and tinctures and concentrates, which require greater vegetative matter to produce what they're looking for. These are especially important, the concentrates such as Rick Simpson oil, which is used for, many people believe, the curing of cancer. If you do not know about Rick Simpson oil, go home tonight, take a look at Google, put in Rick Simpson oil. It's one of the most under-reported medical things that are out there. It's unbelievable. This ordinance is reasonable. It takes, it was, as working with the county, it was, you know, nobody was thrilled to death on either side. They cut it down the middle, and I think they did a very good job and they produced it. Most importantly is consistency. When we have, you know, this city does this, and the county does this, and this city does that, and everybody doesn't know what's going on, where they are. When you have consistent rules and regulations throughout the county, you're going to have better enforcement and better control. And the county voted for this four to zero. Not exactly what I would call a wild-eyed board of supervisors that we have there. They understand they need to be able to get a handle on these large-scale grows, and this will allow them to do that. And at the same time, not waste the sheriff's time or their own people's time on small patient grows. Patients have this right to this medicine. We make it difficult for them to get it by closing dispensaries. They have to drive far distances, or unfortunately, most of them just deal with black market criminals. We don't want that going on. So the county, as phase one, has now allowed a limited number of plants to be grown. And 12 is the county, after long conversations with them, we had many meetings with them, they decided.
It's your time, Mr. Swardlow.
Okay, they decided that that was the correct amount to use.
Thank you.
I do want to pass out to you, though, I noticed in your things there that you had the incorrect listing of what the regulations were that the county passed, what was passed.
Go ahead, hand that to the clerk.
I'll have the judge hand it to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shirley Vaughn?
Shirley who?
Vaughn, my name is Shirley Vaughn, and I have lived in Menifee since 1964. I feel that the city of Menifee should adopt alternative one, the prohibition of marijuana cultivation, the cultivation of marijuana in a movable conveyance, and the manufacturing, distilling, processing, or otherwise manipulating mature or immature marijuana plants, whether grown on site or transported to another site, et cetera. I also feel that the city of Menifee should continue the ban on dispensaries and mobile marijuana deliveries as well. Marijuana is still considered illegal by the federal government, is included on the Schedule I list of most dangerous drugs. The Controlled Substances Act's rules for inclusion on Schedule I includes that the drug or other substance has a high potential for abuse and there is a lack of safety standards. This was reaffirmed by U.S. District Judge Kimberly Mueller on April 15, 2015, when she issued a ruling in Sacramento declining to remove marijuana from the Schedule I list of most dangerous drugs. While medicinal marijuana is legal in California, the courts have ruled that cities and counties have a right to ban marijuana cultivation and medical dispensaries through zoning laws. This was confirmed by the Deputy City Attorney of Menifee at the February 25, 2015 Planning Commission Public Hearing. Another issue I'm concerned about is the drought. In my May water bill from the Eastern Municipal Water District, it states that all outdoor irrigation is to be cut by 50%. If marijuana grown is allowed, it will add to the outdoor irrigation, not cut it by 50%. Is it fair that I am asked to cut outdoor irrigation by 50% when other residents may be allowed to add more to their outdoor irrigation, or in the case of alternative to indoor irrigation? I am against alternatives two and three simply because they would be too hard for city of Menifee code enforcement or the police to enforce. Is code enforcement going to be constantly going out and checking property to make sure that no felon, parolee, or probationer lives upon or within the premises where marijuana is cultivated, grown, or allowed to grow? Is code enforcement going to be coming to the property to check and see how many plants are actually being grown? How about checking to see if extra marijuana isn't being given or sold to friends, relatives, or to minors? Neighbors would be more apt to report marijuana growing in their neighborhood if they knew for sure that was illegal to grow and not be confused by how many plants are actually allowed to be grown. In conclusion, I would like the Planning Commission to approve alternative one, the prohibition of marijuana cultivation, and continue to ban marijuana dispensaries and mobile marijuana delivery services, with the elimination of a part of Section 9.70.070 in alternative one, which says, "A car-carrying qualified patient located on property may manufacture, distill, process, or otherwise manipulate mature or immature plants, whether grown on site or transported to a site, and marijuana by products created at another location and transported at site may be used as additive in another product by the car-holding qualified patient on the property."
Thank you.
Thank you. No further speakers on this item, sir.
I think we do have Mr. Mason, right? Did you fill out a card? Go ahead. That's okay, you can fill out one afterwards, so.
My name is Scott Mason. I'm a deputy district attorney with the Riverside DA's office. I've been employed there for over seven, about seven years now. I have worked in the drug team for two of those years. I've also prosecuted medical marijuana cases. I've also taught the class at Ben Clark Training Center on the investigation of marijuana grows and cultivation. I also am a citizen who lives in Menifee with the rest of you. I was asked to speak here tonight to give my opinion about what you are considering. Let me start by saying, I am not someone who is completely against the use of marijuana for medicinal purposes. I've actually recommended it to friends who are going through serious illness as an alternative because they have no way to go about or successfully treat what they're going through. Their medications are making them sick, and I figure, you know what, go ahead, try marijuana. What's the worst that can happen? It won't work like the rest of your meds. But the reality is, is that I also, on Wednesdays, went to a community meeting held by Todek over in Hemet. This was a group of people who live in, not Hemet, but Paris. A group of people live in Paris where they have a lot of marijuana grows. Right now, marijuana cultivation in the county is out of control. Riverside Sheriff's Department estimates that there are about 3,000 marijuana grows in the county. And they're constantly more and more because it is such a lucrative business. Each plant can grow outdoors up to six feet tall, yielding one to three pounds of marijuana. At the low-scale level, the wholesale level, marijuana is going to cost about $2,400 to $4,800 per pound. At the actual retail level, it's going to be about $6,000 to $9,000 a pound when you're selling it at $15 to $20 a gram. There is a lot of money in marijuana, and so that is why you will have people who want it to be legalized and want it to be grown. There are some people who do want to use marijuana for their own individual medicinal needs, and there's many people that just want to use it for recreational purposes. But when I spoke with the citizens there in Paris, they are living the nightmare of what marijuana unregulated can be. That is that their children are constantly walking by large marijuana grows. And by large, I only mean 24 plants. Because 24 plants at three to six feet each, it's very prominent. You're going to smell it. And this is not something anyone wants growing next to them or their kids walking by on their way to school, or walking by on their way to daycare, or any other place that their kids might go. This is what the stories that I heard, where their own children at school are being asked by other kids, here, here's some marijuana seeds, go plant these on your property, you guys live on some property, and then we'll all grow together and we'll come and get it. Another woman talked about how she was outside and she saw two men, 25 to 26, walking down the street saying that they were looking for their dog. And she said, oh, I haven't seen your dog. What does he look like? They said, well, anyways, we know so you have some property here. If we pay you $10,000 a month, could we come and grow marijuana here? That just shows you that this is something that has a lot of money for people to gain.
Mr. Mason, that's your time.
Okay.
I have a quick, a technical question for you. As the district attorney, what are the type of prosecutions that you're doing for marijuana? Is it the guy who's sick and he's growing it for pain? Or is it the violence and theft and other things involved relating to the growth?
It is definitely, I don't want to take anything from somebody who's helping them even deal with their pain. That kind of goes beyond what is even envisioned by, you know, Proposition 215 and by Senate Bill 420, the Medical Marijuana Program. The reality is, is that the vast majority of people, and I'm saying the vast majority of people, it is for recreational use. There was one marijuana user that I spoke with, and, you know, he's in his, he's from the Vietnam era. He was actually convicted of draft dodging. But he said, I asked him, so does marijuana help with your sickness? And he said, oh, yeah, absolutely. I said, well, what was it diagnosed for? He said, for anxiety. He's like, I don't have any anxiety anymore now that I'm not worried about getting arrested for marijuana. You know, but in reality, I'm not against people using marijuana. The reality is, is that it is completely accessible to everyone in this county. We may ban it, but you can go on weedmaps.com right now and we can have marijuana to this building in 15 minutes. And it's a safe way to do it because the people that advertise on weedmaps.
Where are they located and what?
Well, you'll see them, that they will say that they're located actually inside of the city of Menifee already.
In your.
I apologize. In your last staff report, you had a map that showed multiple, and that's only the ones that were registered on one site.
Well, that's why I'm confused because we have a list here in relation to your question of, on page four of eight, of dispensaries are prohibited in Elsinore, Murata, Temecula, Paris, Canyon Lake Development. And I remember that map, yet we have them all here. You said these are registered, so are they legally registered or are they just there?
No, they're not registered in the sense of having business licenses and so forth. They just are registered with that particular website that I found. I was assisted in.
In other words, they're legally prohibited, but they're existing.
Correct.
And it's available.
That's correct.
That's what I'm getting at, okay.
And in regard to this individual here, staff asked this individual to come and provide information. So this is not a public speaker. This is an individual that should be considered part of the staff's presentation on this item.
With that, can you continue then? Because what you're saying.
That's up to the chair.
Okay.
I would like to. I just had a note from council, being that we're asking questions, he can continue beyond the three minutes. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so marijuana is accessible in the county. You can receive it very safely. That's not really an issue at all. It can be delivered right to your doorstep. Additionally, people who want to grow their own marijuana can grow it outside of the city. They can become a member of a collective or a co-op outside of our city.
Association.
Either one. You can do, there's other things that you can do. The Medical Marijuana Program allows individuals to get together as a group to cultivate marijuana for their own medicinal purposes. As far as becoming someone who is actually a qualified patient, all that takes, just so you know, is you go and see one of the doctors, it's between 40 to maybe 150 at the very high end, to get a recommendation for your own use of marijuana. It can be an oral recommendation, it doesn't even have to be in writing.
So, just to clarify, the county ordinance that's. So, just to clarify, the county ordinance that's likely to be approved, it allows indoor and outdoor cultivation, correct?
Yes, up to 24 plants.
And does it allow these associations or whatever?
They are called collectives, cooperatives, pretty much they're called collectives or cooperatives. Yes, it does allow that. The Medical Marijuana Program allows that. However, the Supreme Court has determined that part of the Medical Marijuana Program allows cities and municipalities to regulate the land use and including regulate where marijuana is cultivated, and the Supreme Court has said even to ban it completely. And that was what happened recently, in the last few years, I think in 2012, with the dispensaries. That was a fight that actually Riverside County Council fought, and they just decided, you know what, we're going to just ban them altogether. It went all the way up to the California Supreme Court, and the California Supreme Court said, yes, you can regulate, including a ban.
So, just to be clear, the county has banned dispensaries, they have banned mo-, have they banned mobile dispensaries?
I believe they have banned dispensaries, I'm not sure if they actually addressed specifically mobile, I don't know that for sure.
But they are allowing personal cultivation and these collectives, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
As far as I understand.
Just want to make sure that they're, because that hasn't, that has a bearing on the availability of this, and it could affect the decision of the commission.
I will say this, on the issue of the county ordinance, when that was presented, when I told that to the community members that are concerned in Paris for their community and the safety of their children, they laughed at the county ordinance as though it would be effective in any way in relieving them of the plague that they are experiencing right now. I think that they, I know, I disagree with Mr. Swordlow, I don't think it's a good amount because the reality is, is 20 of these plants growing on a, 24 of them growing on a property is a significant amount of profit to be made. It's a significant amount of marijuana when you multiply that by one to three pounds per plant, and $6,000 to $9,000 of retail value of marijuana. That's why often at these grows, you will see armed guards at night with assault rifle style weapons. Not at all of them, there are some that don't, but the reality is, is nobody wants that next to them. Especially here in our rural community, you don't want some poor person who's lived on their horse property and raised their, you know, like had a nice life for 20 years, suddenly your neighbor decides, "I'm going to cash in, I'm going to grow some marijuana, I'm going to make some money, and people are going to pay me to come and do the work on my property, that sounds great." One thing that I did notice is when you were talking about the landowner's permission, if you were to consider the second option, that, you may want to ask that that be in writing because you could have someone who already lives there, "You guys passed this ordinance," and they're like, "No, no, I had permission, I swear," when they really, they didn't. So, that's just one suggestion. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
I do, Mr. Mason. In your experience on the unauthorized growers in the county, who do you see is behind these growers? Is there gangs, is it, you know, cartel? I mean, what is coming into our county?
I can't really comment on that one way or the other, but I would say I think that gangs that are selling other drugs are stupid. They should be doing marijuana because there's just way too much money and so little risk in doing it.
And make it clear that anyone who has a marijuana prescription?
It's a recommendation, there's no such thing as a prescription for marijuana.
Oh, there isn't?
There is not.
So, a doctor gives a recommendation?
Recommendation, that's correct.
And those people have access to be able to fill that recommendation?
That's correct. They then can grow, cultivate, or have a primary caregiver do it for them, and then according to the case law, collectives or cooperatively, people can get together to grow it. Like, say if I live in a city where I can't grow marijuana anywhere, then I can have a, find a friend or someone else who lives just outside my city, and I can go there, or I can just order it up over the phone, which most people actually do because it can become somewhat burdensome to cultivate the marijuana sometimes.
Okay, so, so they don't, I misunderstood that, everything I read kept talking about a prescription, so it's a recommendation by a doctor, and is, are you aware, do doctors give an amount that's recommended, or is there opportunity for abuse of the amount the person should be using? Say they start growing it themselves and they should have one ounce a day, I don't know anything, and they end up using five ounces a day, is that detrimental to the health and safety and well-being of that community person?
No, the problem with the medical marijuana laws is that there is absolutely no limit to what a person can use. Their amount that they use, grow, and possess merely has to be reasonably related to their medicinal purposes, whatever that means. So, if you have someone who says, "I want to take a bath in marijuana every day, that's why I have 10 pounds lying around," we've heard that before.
Wow.
You know, "Oh, I like to sleep on a pillow made out of marijuana, that's why I have five pounds of it." We've heard that. So, there is no limit, that's been, that's gone up on appellate, to the appellate courts, and they have struck down. Often you will see people who, they'll have a special recommendation that they paid a doctor extra money for that says they can grow up to 99 plants. This is kind of like an urban law myth. There is no limit to how many plants, and that thing is about worth as much as the paper it's printed on, nothing more.
So, these people are self-medicating themselves?
Yes, and there is, I have not seen any doctors that I have dealt with, that I have spoken with, that are doing any follow-up with their patients, other than that they tell them that their recommendations expire in a year.
Right.
Actually, there's no expiration for any recommendation. Once it's been recommended, you can use it indeterminately.
In the county proposal, it did mention that they would have to renew yearly their card.
That would probably be for the actual card that is part of the Medical Marijuana Program that the county does as a result of that. That card just says they take in their recommendation, they show it, I think they have to pay a fee, and then they get that card. Really, there's no requirement to have any card whatsoever to cultivate your own marijuana.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you'd also mentioned it can be a verbal-
That's correct.
...so-
A verbal recommendation.
So, if you get arrested with possession, and you say, "Well, I don't have a card, but I have a verbal recommendation," is that when the law enforcement or a lawyer such as you would then approach that doctor and confirm the verbal agreement, or how does that process work?
You know, this is kind of like into legal advice at this point. I mean, I've already spoken a little bit about it, but the reality is, is that the Medical Marijuana Program and the Compassionate Use Act provide an affirmative defense. It is technically still against the law to possess and use marijuana, but there is an affirmative defense that a defendant can assert to defend themselves, saying that they have this recommendation, or that they have a card under the Medical Marijuana Program.
I just want to prevent any drug user from flat-out saying, "Well, I'm a qualified patient."
Right.
Anybody can say-
Well, anyone can say anything.
Yeah, so, but is there backup proof? That, I mean, is there follow-up on the DA's part, or?
There could be, but it would probably be more by law enforcement, and probably be more in a case of not simple possession, but where it's clearly for sales, we're talking a pound, somewhere around half a pound or more, something like that, they might follow up, I don't know, it just depends case by case, depends on the history of the person, their past dealings with law enforcement, meaning have they been known to sell marijuana for profit or not before? Because the reality is, nobody can sell marijuana for profit. No one can make profit. That's the one thing that the case law is crystal clear on, no one can profit from selling marijuana. Which makes you wonder why someone would do a large-scale grow if they weren't trying to make a dime off of it. It seems like an awful lot of responsibility and work just to help everybody. There might be one or two people out there that do it for that reason, I don't think so, though.
Thank you, any other questions?
I have a comment.
Sorry, there's rules.
But he told, the president limited-
He's part of the presentation. According to the rules, that's how it could be. So, if we don't have any other questions, Mr. Mason, then we'll go ahead and close, we already had public testimony, we'll close the public hearing at 8 o'clock. Thank you, Scott. We'll bring it to the dais for discussion. This is where we're free to discuss. Mr. Mason, could you stick around, there might be some technical questions in the comment period. We'll go ahead and start. Commissioner Kerwin, do you, what are your thoughts regarding this matter?
I have a lot of thoughts. No one on this dais is considering permitting large-scale growth of marijuana for profit. I think it's widely accepted that we don't want drug trade coming to the City of Menifee. So, starting with that premise, talking about people coming and offering you $10,000 to grow on your property is not an option under any of the alternatives we've discussed, and frankly, I don't see how it would get past staff. We have more respect for our staff than that. What we are talking about is whether or not we want people to grow for their own personal use. Now, Alternative Two was largely put in because of some of my comments and my research, talking to drug enforcement officials, limiting it to indoor growth in an amount so small that even the advocates said it's too small even for indoor growth. More than zero, less than a profitable amount. I thank Mr. Mason for his comments. The one thing that resonated with me is that Mr. Mason himself said he's not opposed to the personal use of marijuana. So banning it in its entirety isn't even the thought of enforcement officials. So if we have an amount that is for personal use only, even straining to make it personal use, and we have it limited to indoors where it can't grow to six feet tall and become Christmas trees as we've seen happen, where there can't be a profitable amount generated, then I think that walks the balance between the voters of California wanting some sort of compassionate use in medical marijuana personal usage versus dealing with the for profit. Now, the part that I want to raise to everybody and make sure you understand is, right now, today, in the City of Menifee, it is not illegal to cultivate marijuana in your home or on your property. It's not in the code, and we don't have drug cartels with armed officials all over the city. So, restricting the amount that's being grown from what's currently probably being grown all over the larger spaces in Romo land, we've heard from some of them at the last conference, doesn't create marijuana boomtown. We're talking about indoor use. If people violate that, we can enforce it through code enforcement. What if people violate it? Well, true, what if they do it now? If we ban it entirely, I am 100% positive people will still attempt to grow it indoors and hide it from code enforcement and do all those kinds of things. I'm sure Mr. Mason would agree that there's lots of people who do things that they know was against the law. People exceed the speed limit when it's posted. You can't stop people from breaking the law who are bent on doing it, but you can give our enforcement an opportunity to deal with it when it happens. So, dealing with some of our concerns, I think Alternative Number Two deals with exactly the balance that Mr. Mason eloquently presented to us, which is you take away the profitability of it, you take away the large-scale growth of it, and you still permit the people who require marijuana, and frankly, people who would just like to have marijuana, a small amount for their own personal use which isn't saleable. Our code, and I don't know if Mr. Mason read this, I doubt, I don't know why you would have, but we actually have a proposed in here, mobile marijuana dispensaries are prohibited. Section 9.70.050B1 says you can't deliver it to anybody in the City of Menifee, even if cultivation is permitted. You can't call up on the phone and have it delivered. If they do, that's a violation of the law, we've got that contended for. So, I am in favor of permitting people to grow small, non-saleable amounts. I mean, you can sell anything if you want to sell it, you can sell it for a negative profit, that's fine, but we're talking about something that is not commercially saleable. And people who attempt to circumvent that by growing out their house, if we ban it, they can still do that, and we'd still have to enforce it. The enforcement's the same whether we choose one or two. Three, there's no enforcement at all, that just goes out the window. So, it would be my recommendation that, you know, Mr. Reuters said it also, people in Menifee are against people making money off marijuana. That's a big deal. I too am opposed to people making money off of marijuana, but I'm in favor of the freedoms and the land use and the rights that people have voted for in the state of California to use it. You see the wave coming. Menifee has an opportunity to be at the forefront of this issue. Look at that chart, nobody's doing anything with this. We have an opportunity to set the forefront of limiting personal use and being compassionate with our citizens who are older, who have illnesses, and who aren't going to be using it for profit. So, if the cartels want to come in, or the gangs, or whomever wants to come in and try to circumvent the laws, they're going to do that anyway, no matter what our laws are. They could be doing it now, which don't have any laws at all to enforce. So, I would like to see the commission adopt Number Two, which I've heard the proponents argue that it's too little. Baby steps, Mr. Swordlow, baby steps. I'd like to see the ice broken on this issue and see how it works, we can enforce it. That would be, that's my speech.
I have one question for Charles in regards to your speech. You're saying it's not an issue, it has, it's my understanding that it has increasingly become an issue, but could you tell me what code enforcement's going on now as far as marijuana growth, police activity, violence, or anything else relating to marijuana in the city? What's the current status?
I'm not sure I can give you a good answer on that, I wasn't prepared, I haven't spoken with code enforcement or the sheriff's office to specifically find out whether or not. I am aware, I am, I have heard from code enforcement that there are groves out there that they are not sure how to deal with it. It isn't as clear in the law as they would like it to be in order to enforce it. Other than that, I don't have a better answer to your question.
Okay. So, Commissioner Phillips?
I agree with Commissioner Kerwin. At first I was looking at Alternative Three, primarily because I do a lot of stuff in the backcountry with my Jeep, and I've been told by a lot of people out there that there are marijuana grows all over the place, and I agree with Mr. Mason about how high those things can get. I have seen marijuana trees when I was in the South Pacific. And, well, not to get too winded, I will say I agree with Commissioner Kerwin, and I'm in favor of Alternative Two.
Commissioner Doty?
I as well am in favor of Alternative Two. I believe if you have medical reasons, you have every right to help yourself. The one issue that maybe staff can answer is, we have, if you grow inside your house, you have to register your house. Does code enforcement and any of that resolution allow random inspection to ensure that, I mean, how are we going to know if there's only six plants on site?
We won't know until someone makes a complaint. So, it's a situation, it's a typical code enforcement concern that you don't know what you don't know until somebody complains, or in some way, shape, or form, that information is brought to your attention, then you would respond to it. Our purpose is not to go out and knock on everybody's door and count the number of plants that they may have in their possession. It's to establish a code that if a violation takes place and becomes aware, the city becomes aware of it, that there's something that can be done about that issue.
Okay, thank you. I'm also against the mobilization of it, so I'm glad to see that that's not an option. And I'm not a fan of it being grown outdoors, because like you said, as our kids walk by it, you can smell it. A typical wall on a property boundary is only five to six feet tall, so even with some shading, I think it's going to draw the eye of, "Hey, what's over there?" So, I don't feel that outdoor growth is, in a town such as this, is appropriate. So, I'm in favor of purely keeping it indoors. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Sobek?
I, I feel that this is too new of an issue, and we're too new of a city to take a lead on this. I, I don't think we should take the lead as the surrounding cities on this. I think we should go with Alternative One and prohibit it, since it is available for those who need it and want it. I don't like playing doctor as a planning commissioner. I don't, I don't like the, where they have the opportunity to self-medicate, it's just too new, there's not enough research- It's just too new, there's not enough research on it. And I think we've got the cart before the horse. And I just would like to go with alternative one, and we're just too new of a city to take a lead on this, and it's already available. And before long, hey, the drug companies will get involved and pretty soon you will probably be able to get it at any Rite Aid and CVS pharmacy. So I like to protect our community and looking out for the health, safety, and well-being of our residents as a whole. And I don't think we're ready for it.
I am in favor of alternative number one, and I'll explain why. We are talking about land use as far as commissioners. There's two issues that we have to think about here. What is the land use? And then the other one, which was not our purview, is personal use. By passing alternative number one, we are not denying people getting it and using it. That's up to them, that's up to the county, the state government to determine who can, who cannot, what is a qualified patient, what is not, that's not us. We need to think as far as what are we doing for the public safety? What are we doing for the perception of our city? What are we doing for land values? That is what we really are here to decide. I agree with most of what you said. And frankly, I'll just, to just public disclosure, I grew up, my brother smoked marijuana. I knew what a marijuana plant was, they grew it on our roof. There was also a house down the street that regularly had cop cars there, and it was a danger to the neighborhood. So I'm aware of the reasons for smoking it. My personal opinion is not to, but that is not my purview here when deciding these issues. My purview is decide what is best value for the city. Now, by us choosing alternative number one, there is still availability, that's why I was asking all those county questions. Is it available in the county? Yes. Is it available in collectives? Yes. We are not denying that. They simply have to drive just beyond Paris or out towards Winchester. You are an unincorporated area. It's not far. As far as growing indoors, there's documentary after documentary of, especially in this era of when there's these...
VHO labs.
Well, there's the labs, but there's also the many homes that have been taken over by the banks and they're unoccupied. What these groups are doing is they're going into them, blacking out the windows, gutting the house, and growing their plants indoors. Okay? That is indoor growth. You can grow a lot of marijuana indoors. You really can. So I don't think the indoor thing is really going to limit it the way you think it is. We will be setting a precedent if we pass alternative number two. We'll be saying Menifee is open for pot use. Let's just put it on our sign where it says, "Welcome to Menifee." If we're going to pass something like this, do not do it now. Do not put it in the newspapers. Menifee, the first city in Riverside County to pass this ordinance, that is not what we want for the economic development director to deal with. Let's not set that precedent. If we pass something that, you're correct, Commissioner Kerwin, and the reason I keep going back to him, he's an attorney, he hits every point, you have to deal with people like him. If we pass something, they're doing it now, we know what's going on, right? But if we pass an ordinance saying, "This is okay," you will encourage people to be financially motivated to sell even indoors. It will turn into what is happening in Paris right now. We need to think about what is the best issue for the city, and yet let people make their own decision on what they're going to do. I believe that we should, in the name of public safety, land values, perception of the city, pass alternative number one, not allowing the cultivation, because people still can get it in other means, and it will protect the interest of the city. So that's my thoughts on that. Any other closing comments or rebuttals, or any of the questions of Mr. Mason from the commission? Yes?
I think it's not quite an accurate analogy to say people are taking vacant or foreclosed homes, blacking out the curtains, and growing saleable quantities of marijuana, because that's an illegal activity. And if we make it more illegal to do that, it's not something that can be stopped. If people are going to circumvent the law, they're going to circumvent it, no matter how restrictive you make it. You can inflict the death penalty, murders still occur. In this particular case, if somebody's, if it's a foreclosed home that there's no landlord who's signed off on approving the growth of marijuana in that property, and somebody breaks into a house that's foreclosed and blacks out the curtains and does it, well, guess what? They're in violation of the code because there's no landlord who has registered that property and signed off on acknowledging and approving of it. So that failsafe is there. If you've got a vacant home where there is a hint of one marijuana plant in it, they're in violation of the law because the landlord has not registered that home. We're giving an opportunity for people who are willing to work within the law, to utilize the law and use it to their advantage. People who are bent on breaking the law to their financial gain are going to find ways to expand it and avoid the law, but they're basically trying to avoid detection. They're not trying to avoid the law. So if somebody wants to fill a vacant house with marijuana, under any of these statutes, it's going to be in violation, even number three, that'd be in violation because you wouldn't have the property owner's consent on file with the city. So those types of operations would be illegal, no matter which one we choose. I think number two gives people an opportunity to work within the law, and if they go outside of that, it's restrictive enough that code enforcement can be made. If we put number one, we're still not going to go door-to-door making sure nobody has marijuana in their house. So it would still have to be based on a complaint from neighbors, even if you put a complete restriction on it. You just can't bust into somebody's house and say, "Hey, marijuana check." So number two gives people a defense to a charge of marijuana use, and it gives them a permission for limited use. If they expand by that and somebody detects it, we have enforcement elements. That's kind of where I'm getting at. It gives people an opportunity to work within the law, as opposed to being outlaws all the time.
So I understand your point. You're trying to give them a legal means of doing what, the medicinal or whatever. Would you say that though, if they can get it otherwise, and yet protect the name of the city, the value of the city, the public safety that may be encouraged by legalizing it, what do you have to say about that? What's your comment on that as far as if they can get it elsewhere, but you've got to look at the other side, what is it going to do to the city?
Well, why do people grow tomatoes? Because it's cheaper than buying tomatoes, and you can control the quality of the tomatoes that you consume. If you can get it elsewhere, that's great. Is it free? No. If you're on a limited income and you require these kinds of medicines, and you can grow it in your own home for little or no cost, then that's a tremendous benefit to people who are on a fixed budget. So being able to use their property for that purpose in safety, away from prosecution, I think that's an advantage, especially a financial advantage to our folks who are on a limited income, of which there are quite a few in the city.
It's kind of funny you say that, because I remember, was it, I think the first time we talked about this, you said something like, "It's not our job to provide affordable medicine to people."
It's true.
Well, that's...
Well, no, it's not our, you're saying, I was addressing your specific, your question, which was if they can get it elsewhere, why do we need to let them grow it? And the specific answer to that question is, it's imperfect. Why should we let them? Because if you can get it for free, why should we require them to go pay for it elsewhere? No, I'm not saying it's our obligation to provide them with free medication, but that was the specific answer to your question.
That's my question. Okay, that's fair. I would just urge the commission to consider, his points are valid, but you, all the decisions we make on this commission is a balancing act of the better, greater versus the good. Okay? What's better, or we have a saying, good, better, best. So in considering that, as a commission, we're here to protect the city in safety, land values, perception, and I would encourage you to weigh that in this decision. Did you have a comment?
Yes. The, I'd like to actually echo a lot of the comments that my fellow commissioner down there said that, and I don't know if I agree with having to send people elsewhere to go get it, because now you're telling the citizens, "Go break the law. Go pay for marijuana that you need medically, and then transport it back within our city limits."
That's...
Which is against the law, but that's essentially what we're saying is you now need to go deal with the drug cartels, you need to deal with the legal growth for your medical purposes and go pay money.
But it's legal in the county. It is legal in the county. So let's ask council on that.
But you're telling them to go buy it.
Yeah. We tell them to go buy medicine for pain, for antibiotics.
But you can't sell it for profit, though.
They have resources.
That's the whole point. We don't want them to sell it.
For profit, right, but that's what we're kind of telling them to go find elsewhere for profit, which you can't sell for profit.
Well, as described earlier, it is illegal to sell for a profit, but if you need to obtain the medicine, then I believe you can go to a collective and purchase it. It's not, you don't know necessarily whether or not you're aiding a transaction that is for profit or not, and that is one way that you can obtain the medication.
To reiterate that, blacking out windows and doing a small or a large growth is still illegal, and that's not, you know, part of what alternative two allows, that it allows small growth for personal use.
The point was you encouraged that, though. You encouraged that. Go ahead, you had a comment.
Yes, I forgot what I was going to say, but I was still in agreement with Commissioner Carwin. And I like what you were saying about that because we're putting our citizen, particularly those who are not very mobile, who depend on this stuff, in a very precarious situation because as you can see on page 10 of 18, where you have these prohibitions against delivery, and that right there complicates the situation for a medically dependent person who may have to depend on either a caregiver or somebody else. And then expanding on what you were saying about going and buying it, and I think Mr. Mason would probably agree, that there is a burgeoning black market already established that may offer discount rates for senior citizens, for example, or something like that, or high school clubs, or whatever. Whoever's using this stuff can go outside and get it, not necessarily from a legal dispensary, but from a black market. And this is another thing that we as citizens of Menifee need to understand. We are not an island here. We are co-located with other cities. And as a result of that, we don't want to add to their crime burden by sending people out to what they may think is a valid dispensary, but actually in operation by what you were talking about, the cartels. So I don't like shoving our problems into other communities.
Okay, do we have any other comments? Did you have a comment, Lisa?
You know, I just, I've just been sitting here thinking, I was a PTA mom, and I'm a grandma, and I have children, grandchildren that live here, and a lot of children that live in my neighborhood. And I just feel that this is too new. We're too new of a city to make this kind of decision now. And I think that we need to look out for the health and the safety and the well-being of the people here as a whole, the majority of the people. The majority of the people, people have come here to live as families. Everybody that I talk to in this city say, "Menifee is a really special city." And people have bought homes here as a place, a good place to raise their children. And I would like to see us continue to keep this city as the town of a lifetime that it was called when I first moved here 26 years ago, a place where we moved to raise our children. And I just, I don't think we should take the lead on this, and I would encourage my other commissioners to vote with me on alternative one tonight.
Mr. Cherkidus, one thing that hasn't been said, and I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank staff, this is our third meeting on this issue, and this is really a comprehensive, above and beyond report with the information that's available, and I don't think staff got enough credit for how much research and extra effort went into this after doing this two other times to come back a third time and actually come up with something new and helpful for us. So I just wanted to commend staff for the staff report that they provided with us tonight. I think it was measurably helpful.
Yes, I'd like to echo it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
If we don't have any more discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote. So specifically...
Do we need to make a motion?
So we are...
Do we need to add about the...
The suggestion would be that one of you make a motion identifying which alternative that you would prefer, and then if you receive a second, and then you vote on that. If that fails, then you have an option for another individual or the same individual to take a second motion, offering another of the three alternatives.
And it's only one item, because there was the finding exemption of...
That's within the resolution, no matter what. So I would just piggyback on what Charles said. So it should be a motion to adopt the resolution, and within that, whatever alternative is chosen by the motion maker.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number PC 15-199, alternative one at this time.
Also, we need to add the wording, we were going to add the wording, "Processing" to alternative number one, prohibiting the cultivation and processing and all the other language that goes with that. Okay, I'd like to make a second on that. So do we take a roll call?
Roll call, please. Commissioner Doty?
No.
Commissioner Carwin?
No.
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes.
Motion fails.
So a motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Yes, I'd like to propose a motion to adopt resolution number PC 15-199 with the addition of alternative two.
Second.
Commissioner Doty?
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sobek?
No.
Chair Thomas?
No.
Motion passed.
So the motion passed, alternative number two.
And we assume one-year amortization.
Oh, I wanted to bring up that point. I'm sorry to bring that early. I would encourage six months. One year's too long. They don't need a year to conform and get rid of their pot plants.
I actually wanted to make the suggestion of the language that is already in the dispensary, where it says, "Any medical marijuana dispensary existing within the city of Menifee on the effective date of this chapter shall cease operation forthwith." And so that's the same wording that is in the dispensary prohibited. Wouldn't we use that same wording in cultivation?
We specifically had discussed establishing an amortization period, so we put language in. If you strike the amortization paragraph, then what you just described, I believe, would prevail.
What would staff suggest on it?
Staff suggests one-year amortization.
I think it's different to pull out existing plants than it is to stop a dispensary. You can cease business operations rather than, like, if people have a grow that they need to remove, they have to actually go out with bulldozers.
But it's illegal to have a grove, so shouldn't they cease it immediately?
Yeah, if they've got 24 plants and we're living under alternative number two, one, we're too, I'm sorry, two, alternative number two is too mature and four, so if a guy's growing 24 plants, he better get rid of 22 of them. It doesn't take that long to burn it, right? Is that fair?
I would agree to that, striking the amortization language, if that's the feeling of it, I would... Do we need to reopen the vote, since we're changing the language?
So we would need a motion to basically rescind the last vote. Then, if that passes, then we would have a new vote on the resolution with the new language.
As amended, okay.
Yeah, so if there is a motion, a motion to reconsider or a motion to rescind, either way, it's the same thing.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the just previously approved alternative number two. Do we have a second? Do you understand?
No.
Well, what we're saying is we want to go ahead and do what you said there as far as they have to immediately comply, but to do that, we just passed it. We have to rescind what we just did and then re-approve it, and by striking the amortization wording, that will be the rule. So we have to rescind.
But am I agreeing to alternative two?
You're agreeing to rescind alternative number two.
Okay, I agree, yes.
Second, okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Doty?
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes. So now somebody needs to make a motion to adopt the resolution with alternative number two, with the amended wording, striking the amortization wording, which would in effect, by default, to immediate...
It's page nine of 18.
I will try. I'd like to propose a motion to adopt resolution number 15-199, employing alternative two in the language and striking the amortization language. Alternative Two in the language and striking the amortization language.
Second.
Okay, before we go into the vote, just to be clear for us, we obviously have opposed, we're still allowed to vote no, but that wording will stay in, correct? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Doughty.
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sobek.
No.
Chair Thomas.
No. So motion passes, and with the amortization wording removed. Okay. God bless Menifee and help us all.
Well, it's going before the council.
No, this is final land use, right?
No, this, this is a code amendment, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's a code amendment, it must go to the council.
Let's go for the council.
Okay, so we're on... Yeah, they do. Mr. Mason, come to the city council meeting.
Thank you for attending.
Okay, item number 9.3.
Just, all these people are just now gonna move from our city.
I'm sorry. That's that new math. There we go. Oh, there's my tab. I feel it was hiding. Okay, 9.2, the Garbani Track, Tenet Track Map, 2014-73, Change of Zone. Let's...
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this item before you this evening, the project planner on it is Russell Brady. I would ask Russell to review this with the planning commission, and we'll be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Russell Brady presenting for staff, item number 9.2, as noted, consisting of Track 2014-073 and Change of Zone Number 2014-072. Project is located northerly of Garbani Road, westerly of Han Road and Sherman Road. The current zoning on the site is industrial park, and the proposed zoning is one-family dwellings R1, to be consistent with the general plan designation of 2.1 to 5 dwelling units per acre. Surrounding zoning includes one-family dwellings, residential agriculture, five-acre minimum, manufacturing service, commercial in the surrounding area. Current land use on the site is vacant. Surrounding land uses to the north and east are single-family residential, and to the west and south is vacant. Tenet Track Map Number 2014-073 proposes a Schedule A subdivision of 9.2 gross acres into 30 single-family residential lots with a minimum lot size of 7,200 square feet, and one open space lot for water quality detention purposes. As noted, the Change of Zone proposes a change zoning of the site from industrial park to one-family dwellings, consistent with the general plan. Here showing the proposed Tenet Track Map with the proposed 30 residential lots, and the water quality basin highlighted there in purple. As noted in the staff report, and staff does have some slides that the commission wishes, we noted that the boundary sections, as shown on the Tenet Track Map, are not preferable. However, we have included conditions of approval, 39 and 50, that as they go through the process, the post-entitlement process, with grading, prior to grading permits, that they seek the preferred alternatives that staff has put forth, to seek those before they go to the default design, which is shown on the Tenet Track Map.
I have a question about that. Why did staff give them those options when the preference is to get rid of the V-ditch and put a block wall?
Those alternative, or those preferred designs would require coordination with adjacent property owners. At this time, we do not have authorization from those to ensure that those are the guaranteed designs. So at this time, they have control of their own property, and that's the way the Tenet Track Map shows it. However, we are encouraging them through the proposed conditions to seek the preferred designs as staff has laid out.
Has staff reached out to those property owners and gotten their opinion, or at least a tentative opinion, as far as what they would allow?
Staff has not directly, although I'm not sure if the applicant has had any discussions with them at this time.
Okay, we'll ask the applicant later. Okay, thank you.
With that, staff recommends adoption of Resolution PC 15-212, recommending the city council adopt mitigated negative declaration, adopt Resolution Number 15-213, recommending city council approval of Change of Zone Number 2014-072, and adopt Resolution Number 15-214, recommending city council approval of Tenet Track Map Number 2014-073. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Russell. Does the commission have any questions of Russell or staff in regards to this item? Commissioner Kerwin?
I do. This parcel that's vacant, is it owned by the same developer who built the rest of what's around it?
I do not believe so.
See, my question was, why wasn't this done to begin with? Because it seems like part of the same development.
Yeah, this is essentially kind of filling in the hole that the surrounding development kind of left. My guess would be the developer at the time just simply didn't have control of the property, and whoever did is now coming forward with this proposed development.
So is there a proposed specifications of what's to be built there as to whether or not it will match the surrounding properties? I guess I can ask the applicant that unless you know.
Match in terms of density?
Size, design, that kind of thing?
It's generally compatible, but the surrounding zoning is R1, and so this project is proposing R1 zoning, so it would be the same development standards applied to this project as was applied to the adjacent development.
Well, I guess what I mean is, will it look like a different community altogether, or will it look like part of the same? I don't know if we have those specs.
It would likely be a different home builder, so the product that would be built would vary from what was built, I wanna say, five-plus years ago, or maybe not even that long ago. Yeah, three or four years ago.
Okay, thank you. I can ask the applicant other, more specific questions.
Okay, any, Commissioner Phillips?
Yes, I had one question, and that was concerning the V-ditch on the north side. But I guess I would ask the applicant as well. It seems to me, as I understand what I read, that they want to remove that V-ditch. And when I was out there, I remember, last winter, we had a little dusting of snow. It didn't fall into the city limits, but it fell in this particular area. And I remember going out there and seeing that. Now, that translates to me into a little bit more runoff, if by luck, we get some more snow. And other, that area's gonna be pretty much waterproofed. When I say waterproofed, I mean, you're gonna put in pavement, you're gonna put in manicured lawns, you're gonna grade this thing, this project, to where you're gonna end up with quite a bit of runoff. My concern is whether or not it's really feasible to get rid of that V-ditch on the north side. I agree with everything else, but I would like to see home designs match what's in that area.
Maybe staff can address that as far as, I mean, other areas don't have V-ditches, and they grade it so the water does, is handled by the normal flow.
Yes, if I may, that V-ditch was placed in there to actually, if you can see, it's actually to protect the existing development there, to take the runoff from the vacant property. And the idea would be is to eliminate that V-ditch, so you don't have a maintenance issue or problem there. There'll still be the drainage, there'll still have to, the property will just have to drain properly, so that any, any water going onto that property would be draining off that property appropriately, so there wouldn't be any adverse impacts to the adjacent property or to the new development as well. That would be part of the design process. The intent is to get rid of that V-ditch if at all possible, so you don't have a, ending up with a no-man's land, or a space there, or a maintenance issue as well. And there are ways to reduce and eliminate that V-ditch and still maintain the required drainage on that property.
Would that show up in the grading plans?
Yes.
Or when you actually do the...
The grading would have, yes, the grading would have to, and also, because it has to show us the direction as to where the property's gonna drain, where each parcel would drain, and this as well, and if there has to be an adjustment in terms of the walls, retaining walls and so on, depending on which version is used. So that would be, that would be resolved.
Okay, because when you look at this, the drainage is going in that direction. That was one of the concerns that I had when I, I looked at the map, and I looked at the grading, and I was wondering, I was saying that even if you develop that property, you're gonna end up still getting this flow. And I was worried more about runoff. But if it's gonna be addressed through the grading...
Yeah, it'll be addressed as part of that, and then it'll be draining it properly where you wouldn't need that V-ditch any longer than...
Okay.
Designed, the drainage would be designed so you wouldn't, that V-ditch would not be required.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a technical question, well, you're still going, you're done with your presentation? I assume they had Quimby fees or such to compensate for parks, things like that. Talked about the V-ditch, that was my question. Okay, Lisa or Commissioner Doughty, do you have questions?
Well, I did talk to staff about the V-ditch beforehand, so I understand that now, and I would, so, I would, well, this is not for them. Okay. I have a question about the future neighborhood parks in that neighborhood. Because they're not having to build any parks, is there any neighborhood parks that are slated for that area?
Yeah, somewhere right across the street.
I'm not aware of any in the immediate area. There are, in the adjacent development, there is actually one immediately to the, actually, just right here, a small park area that would be accessible to this development.
But there's a block wall there, correct?
There is actually a pedestrian access. I went out and visited the site, there is actually a sidewalk that connects this portion of the site to that off of Garland, and so this site would similarly have access to that.
Okay, because on the south side is the trails, correct?
South side is the trail in Garbani, correct?
Okay. All right.
It's a five-acre park, I think.
I'm not aware of whether that park is an HOA maintained and owned park, but it is, you know, it's not a gated park.
Okay, so it's not gated, but we don't know if it's HOA? Okay.
It is HOA.
It is HOA. So technically, this neighborhood should not be allowed to use that park.
Is this part of, gonna become part of the HOA?
No, it's not likely that this would be part of the HOA for the surrounding track. The park does have to be open to the public if it was credited for any Quimby fees or any diff park fees. So there's, it was not conditioned to be a private park, and there was no approval for a private park, even though it is a HOA maintained.
So they can't gate it off like Menifee Lakes did, right?
And the city's currently undergoing a parks and trails master plan, and that will establish where parks will be located in the city based off need.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I do have one clarification, like, condition of approval, 114A. I fully agree and understand that the half-width right-of-way per the general plan should be 59 feet, but there's no intention for Garbani to be that large of a road, so 50 foot's fully adequate. But the question that I have is that, it says Garbani Road to be improved half-width plus 10 feet past the center line, or match existing improvements. But on all the other, even on the exhibit on the screen here, the shaded part shows improvements up to center line, and I believe there were two or three other sections within the document that stated to be improved up to center line. So I just, you know, can we rewrite that COA to remove the 10 feet? Because I don't think the existing condition goes 10 feet past center line, because, I mean, that can also be...
Oh, yeah, is that for a trail, though?
That's for the trail that's already existing, you may need to connect into?
Well, no, the trail's way off to the side over by the right-of-way, around the far north side. It looks like you have your street, curb gutter, some parkway, sidewalk, more parkway, and then a 14-foot trail, which is on the southern edge of the track boundary.
I would defer to Yolanda with engineering on this one, but as is shown on the Tenet Track Map, what looks like it's proposed is the 32 feet plus one foot, which would match the existing improvements to the east of the project site, if I'm not mistaken.
Sorry, thank you. The condition of requiring the improvement to be half width of the road plus 10 feet past the center line is actually a standard condition. So what you see on the exhibit is just a conceptual, but when it does go to actual construction, they will be required to do the 10 feet past the center line.
But even though it also says that the, the next part says, "or match existing improvements," I mean, if I was a developer, I'd be like, well, I'm not installing 10 feet that lead to a dirt road.
Right.
And it's a public safety hazard if you're driving on that extra 10 feet, and all of a sudden, you drive on dirt.
Well, you can't make it exactly 10 feet past the center line. You have to take a look at what is existing as well. So you have to probably make some kind of transition as you do the construction.
So what is right before, can we pull an overhead up? The overhead, no, the original, no, there was a picture, yeah. So if you drive down here, and you're going down Han, you turn west on Garbani, you go past the first Lanham Street, you go past the second development there on the right, and then we come to this development. How wide is that street from Sherman down west? How wide is that? Is it center line plus 10, center line plus 6? What is it?
I believe...
His point is, you don't wanna make it wider if it's only 6 foot.
Actually, the north side is supposed to be matched by this development, but what's going on in the south side is probably not to the full half width of Garbani.
Yeah, we're only concerned with the north side, so what's going on on the north side?
The north side is actually of, I believe, 50 feet from the center line.
I just wanna see consistency, that's all. I don't want any, one COA saying one thing, but the exhibit show another thing, it just gets confusing. If we can cut that off now...
Can I just ask, is that what we're approving? That specific, we're approving...
The COA will get approved with this.
Condition of approval's part of the resolution along with changing zoning.
Okay.
Because we're approving the track map along with the change of zone, that's why. That's a good question. If we were just doing zoning, you'd be right, we shouldn't be talking about it, but we are doing the track map with it. Yep.
And just to throw another random thought out, is if that property in the south gets developed, and they do, you know, between Kirk and Sherman, you know, when you say "or match existing," that could put them on the hook for full street improvements.
So if they, if the south were to develop the south, southern parcel, would they be required to do 50 plus 10, or what? What would they be required?
Yeah, they will be required to do the same thing, because they have to match what would be existing, plus a little bit of, they have to blend the street past the center line. They can't just build the road right at the center line. So they have to do like a little bit of a matching work past the center line. That way, the street would look nice.
Yeah, they'll do like a, like a three-foot overlay feather...
Correct.
Just to smooth it out, so it looks good.
So getting back to your concern, if they were to leave the 50 plus 10 or match, is that liberal enough to allow them to be consistent, so we're not doing this?
Yes, and actually, during design stage, what would happen would be, we're gonna take a look at not just the horizontal alignment of the road, we're also gonna take a look at the vertical alignment. That way, you're not going to end up with a road that's kind of weaving as you go, as you travel Garbani.
So to address your concern, they leave it vague enough so that they can adjust it?
To me, I just remove the 10 feet. I mean, if that's what's out there today, is, you know, you're 50 feet, then they do 50 feet and match existing, or, I just, because usually when you see half-width plus 10, that's, I gotta do my half-width plus 10, and that other 10 feet's made for the eastbound traffic.
I'm not exactly sure what is out on the east side, so it could be more than 50 feet, whatever is existing there right now. That's why we had to, we had to make the condition a little bit general, so that if the improvement past the project boundary on the east side is not exactly 50 feet, you have to match that.
Okay, I just, it just goes with, there's three or four other locations within the report that show it at half-center line. So I just, I would like to see some clarification without three or four different options, and, you know, a developer will typically choose the cheapest route and fight for that, so.
That's correct, but basically, what would happen during design stage is that we're gonna make sure that the road is designed in accordance with the city standards. If you make it too very specific on the condition, it, sometimes it would... If you make it too very specific on the condition, it, sometimes it would be even worse than making it generalized, that way you can, you will have the option to to be a little bit more general when you do the final design. That way you can impose the city standards when they do the design for the road.
His concern is that the report's saying three different things, right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm gathering, is that you want consistency throughout the report.
Correct.
That it all says the same thing.
What matters is, the staff report may do that, but what matters is what the actual ordinance is, what does the ordinance say? It's the conditions that matter? So the conditions of approval, are they consistent? So the conditions say fifty plus ten, and that's, that's what's...
I believe the condition would be the one that would prevail.
Okay, okay.
And that, that will override the Garbani Road typical cross section on the tentative track map?
On the conceptual.
Yeah, because that shows one foot, so, and that's what, that's just the inconsistency that... I mean, it is what it is, and if we're gonna do ten feet, that's fine, for match existing, that's fine.
It's the language, ultimately it is the language of the condition of approval that prevails.
So what prevails is the condition, even though it shows differently on the map, yeah. Maybe staff can just make a note of the comment and adjust the map accordingly. Any other concerns?
That's all I have. Actually, no, I lied. I have a que, uh, is recycled water located nearby? Because there was a thing saying that the developer had to lay purple pipe and connect pipes to it, but I assume that meant if it's not nearby, you go with domestic, but when it is available, you disconnect the domestic and then connect it to the recycle?
I'm not familiar whether the recycled water is located adjacent to or nearby this site.
To answer your question, Commissioner, I believe that's correct, if they, even though it'd still be plumbed with that, it may not be available, it'd be hooked up to the domestic, and then if it is available at some point in the future, then that would be used for, recycled water could be used then.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of switching to recycled water.
For the landscaping.
For the landscaping and all that kind of stuff.
On that note, though, I have been finding out that plants aren't lasting as long, and then a lot of vegetation they're finding doesn't do well to recycle. I agree, I think we should use recycle as much as possible, but in the, I've heard developers complain, on the other hand, that the cost down the road is even, can be even more.
So do you have any comments?
Nope, I'm done.
Okay, then only, my concern would be, my preference would be that the V ditch be removed, because that is a, a magnet for trash, for youth, and for crime and drug use. That's, it's just, anytime you have those, in fact, that's why a lot of cities don't have tunnels underneath things, and they don't have these alleys, you have, it's just a magnet for problems, so I would encourage removal of the V ditch and them to coordinate with the property owners to try and put that wall up, get rid of the V ditch, and have the grading, obviously, so it flows like any other development would. So having said that, do we have a motion to adopt?
Do we have to hear from staff?
I apologize, yeah, we already heard from staff.
I mean, client?
Let's see here. Yeah, do we have the applicant here who'd like to speak? Okay.
Thanks, my name's Rich Scott, represent the applicant, DCI Investments. You had several questions, I hope to answer them all. I also have our civil engineer here, in case it gets too technical. First, we didn't develop the adjacent property, we are attempting to match it, I've met with the architect that designed those homes, and I'm hoping to retain him to design our homes. We are hoping to implement the removal of the V ditch option, we haven't approached the adjacent homeowners yet, we have approached the homeowners association. Our plan is to approach the individual homeowners after we receive tentative approval.
I noticed it's said in there, we would have to do a lot line adjustment, does that mean you're gonna be taking some of their land, or you would be giving them land?
This option gives them land.
Gives them land, okay, they'll be a lot more amenable to that.
I think so as well. And we are also gonna be talking to them about annexing this project into their HOA. So, we hope to achieve that as well. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. We support the staff recommendation for approval, obviously.
Just on a side note, are you planning on breaking ground soon, or sitting and waiting?
Well, we've already, we've got a grading plan in already, so a little bit ahead of the game, so our goal is to do so as quickly as possible, hopefully within the next four to six months.
And just to clarify, the, it's, there's, there's a trail, right, there's a, there's a non-adjacent sidewalk and plus a trail next to it, what?
Along Garbani.
Yeah.
Right there.
Right.
Okay, good, yeah, good deal.
Maybe our engineer can address that.
Sure, the, the trail is actually on the property, so it's, it's a lot that will be located on the property, so it's outside of the right of way.
Okay.
Can you just state your name for the record, too?
Sure, Steve Austin.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions of the applicant? Okay.
No, I just want to thank the applicant for listening, going without staff's recommendation to figure, to figure out something with that V ditch.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Before you go, I did have one question. Have you approached the tribes? It looks like, when I was reading, that there's two different tribes involved in this, and in past projects, we've had a little bit of turf battles going on with that.
That's a condition, isn't it, in the, there's a mitigation plan, isn't there?
Yes, I saw that, and I saw that, so Bobo was on one page, and then on the next page, there was the Pachanga. And so I was wondering, have you run into any difficulties there?
Um, no difficulties, just letters requesting essentially what the conditions of approval request. That during grading, that, that it's monitored to see if there is anything that's found.
Any other questions, applicant? Okay, then do we have any public testimony?
We don't, and I'll just note, you guys did receive correspondence from the Pachanga tribe.
And this was properly noticed as well?
Yes, sir.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at eight fifty-eight, and does the commission have anything to discuss or clarify or opine on this project?
No, I, you know what, I just, just with, in the letter from Pachanga, that that was a village site at one time, it's recognized as Indian village sites, so I, I just hope you do take seriously, that if you do find anything there, to take it seriously.
Any other comments?
Yes, I had one, and I think the staff is already on top of this. I'm worried about, are you planning on importing any soil? And if so, um...
It's designed to be a balanced earthwork job, so...
Okay.
Sometimes it can change as the...
Okay.
But typically, when it's designed to balance, it comes a real close.
Okay, I, will you be submitting any kind of soil testing for, not necessarily for compact, compactness, but I'm thinking about, um... Yeah, phase one or phase two. In your initial study, it didn't show anything, but we've had concerns raised by various residents about whether or not any kind of sludge or waste material was deposited there, and I think that you may want to keep that in the corner of your mind.
We are, in fact, the phase one recommended some additional studies, and those are a condition of grading permit issuance.
So it went to phase two in physical testing?
I don't believe it's, if it's technically a phase two, it's called additional studies, and they're phase one. I don't think it goes to the point of a phase two.
Well, there's, you probably are aware, there's a great political rift and debate in this town based on the dumping that's been going on, and...
Or past dumping.
And past dumping, I'm sorry, past dumping, and we're encouraged, I'm personally encouraging all development that comes in to take it on themselves, to go beyond the requirement, to at least do some form of phase two testing, or to give a comfort level, and that's something that you could even disclose to future buyers, saying, "We've tested beyond what is required", that would go a great deal in appeasing people and making them more comfortable.
Yes, it's called a focused environmental assessment, yeah.
If I could add to that, they were actually, they are after the condition of phase two.
Oh, they are, okay.
Okay.
That's part of our requirement of when we prepare the water quality management plan.
Right, to do the phase two analysis that includes testing for bio solids.
Perfect, yeah, that's what we're getting, yeah.
Okay.
And just to make you feel comfortable, there was testing done on the sites all around, and everything's gone forward, but it is a comfort level, so.
You want to include...
That's COA one twenty, actually.
Okay, you want to include your Title two, twenty-two metals in that.
Condition.
They're not that expensive, but that's a good one, the Title twenty-two plus the bio solids.
Okay.
Commissioner Carwin, did you have a comment?
He had a question for staff. Approving or disapproving this, do we have to specify about the V ditch? It looks like there's a choice to be made, or whether we're gonna require removal of the, it sounds like they're willing to do it voluntarily, but the way this is, the resolution is laid out, do we need to make specific language about the B ditch in voting?
Uh, no, since it's incorporated into the language of the conditions for the project, which is incorporated as an exhibit to the resolution.
Preferred alternatives.
Yeah, those are the preferred alternatives they shall seek.
So approving it would be a requirement to remove the V ditch?
No.
No.
The reason we can't is part, to remove the V ditch, the adjacent property owners have to agree. We cannot force them to.
Well, that's only one of the preferred, there's three preferred choices.
But it's in order, right?
So it's whatever they work with staff to determine, because I, well, when I talked to staff earlier, if they were to remove that one wall, they have to get permission from every single property owner who lives behind that wall. There's houses all along there, so there's another alternative that might be less expensive, so there's, there's three.
But the word is that the preference of staff is the first one, right?
And there's three, there's three choices, so.
But if the first one is, if they can negotiate with the property owners, they have to do the first one, right?
Correct, if the first one is feasible, they shall do the first one. Good, thank you.
And that's our preference as well.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? So if that's the case, do we have a motion to approve these different resolutions? Let's do them one at a time. Somebody like to make a motion? Commissioner Doty, you want to be, make your initial, first, very first motion?
I'm gonna butcher it, so, here we go.
Go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number PC fifteen dash two one two, recommending the city council adopt a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Doty?
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes. Do we have a motion? You want to do all three?
Yeah, why not? I'd like to approve Resolution number...
Okay, you make a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number PC fifteen dash two one three, recommending city council approval of zone change number two zero one four dash zero seven two.
I second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Doty?
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number PC fifteen dash two one four, recommending city council approval of tentative track map number two zero one four dash zero seven three.
Zero nine three?
Zero seven three.
Oh, is it, it's different?
I think there was an error on the staff report page that said nine three, it's actually seven three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Doty?
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes. Okay, you have some homes.
Alright.
Now, item nine point three. Okay. Do we have a conditional use permit two thousand thirteen dash one one four, the Bellany Wireless Stealth Communication Tower? Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, Ryan Fowler is the project planner on this. He'll agree with the commission, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Ryan Fowler here to present Bellany Wireless Stealth Communication Tower, CUP two thousand thirteen dash one one four. The project site is located just to the south of Scott Road, just south of the shops at Scott on Bailey Park Boulevard, it's located east of Zider's Road and west of the two fifteen. The property is zoned general commercial to the north, east, and west, is also property zoned as, is property zoned as Sina Highway Commercial, and to the south is general commercial. The project site and all of the properties surrounding the project site are, according to the general plan, economic development corridor. The site is vacant land, to the north and to the west is the shops at Scott, and to the east is vacant land, to the south is a construction and storage yard. So the planning application includes a proposal for a seventy foot tall cell tower disguised as a faux water tank. There's a twelve hundred and two square foot area for the equipment and the base of the tower, and that'll be surrounded by an eight foot tall block wall. Within that wall, there's a one hundred and ninety-four square foot equipment shelter, as well as a thirty kilowatt backup generator. Within the faux water tank, there'll be four antennas on three sectors, so for a total of twelve, and that'll be fully concealed by the water tank, and it will be located at a center line of sixty-four feet above ground level, and there will be space within the tower for an additional co-location at a, at a future time when that is actually proposed. On the outside of the faux water tank will be painted the city's logo, and access to the site will be provided via a twelve foot wide gated access road which connects to Bailey Park Boulevard. And you can see from the site plan here, the base of the tower is located up on the upper left-hand corner, it's tucked in behind the shops at Scott building. The access to the tower comes off of Bailey Park Boulevard, and then you can see on the right side of the exhibit, along the entire project frontage, there is wrought iron fencing and pilasters, as well as the gated entry, and then trees along that frontage as well. Here's a picture of the elevations. The one on the left is viewed from Bailey Park Boulevard looking west, and you see the shops at Scott building, the existing building located behind the tower. This is a scene from Bailey Park Boulevard, so you'll see here, the pilasters, the wrought iron, the trees, and also, not shown in this image, is some low shrubs as well that'll be planted along the, the frontage. There's three photo simulations, this is the first one, this is a view from Zider's Road. You're looking across the vacant parcel that will be shops at Scott, and across the existing shops at Scott building. Here is an image from Bailey Park Boulevard, and again, behind it is the shops at Scott, shops at Scott building and the frontage. And then in the, the circled yellow is the faux water tank, this is an image east of the two fifteen interchange along Scott Road. This time, staff is recommending adoption of Resolution PC fifteen two oh nine, adopting a mitigated negative declaration, and adoption of Resolution number fifteen two ten, approving conditional use permit number two thousand thirteen one one four. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does staff, I have a couple of questions, or does any other staff have questions? Does commission have questions of staff at this time? Commissioner?
I have one question. Current site usage, is that something that you've discussed with the proposed buyer or leaser? There's a number of automobiles and tractor trailers on that lot. And then on the other side, it, it looks like it's for sale, like one point eight six acres.
I'm not sure about the, the lot for sale. I know that this particular project site, we've heard that there are some vehicles stored there at this time that is not permitted land use. We've just referred that to, to code enforcement to let them know that that activity may be going on.
Yeah, when I drove by there, the first thing you notice is, there's a, there must be about fifty cars on there, and about four or five tractor trailer, you know, the big rig, it's in the back there. And I was just curious, because I had been told that those cars were there, but when I drove by there, it was like a used car lot.
I went out there a couple of months ago when it was completely vacant, but I did hear about that and referred that to our code enforcement.
I was just wondering whether... I was just wondering whether or not we should be concerned about that or is there going to be any strife and what have you?
No, that's something that we'll turn over to code enforcement. I think that's really separate from what we're dealing with here tonight.
Commissioner Doty, do you have any questions of staff?
The cell antennas, are they inside the faux structure?
Yes, they are.
Completely invisible.
They're fully concealed. They'll be surrounded by, there's a, in the photo simulations, that gives you a little bit better picture of what it'll actually look like and the antennas will be inside of that tank.
Do want to say, I actually like the idea of the faux water tank, it's a lot better than a big old pine tree that is perfectly straight.
Phallic symbol, yeah, they just don't look very good.
It fits in well with the, I feel it fits in well with the neighborhood, excuse me, I don't know if you're.
Oh, I'm done.
It fits in well and I, you know, I've always, when I look at some of these cell towers, I look at them as visual pollution. And so I was really, I was really happy to see that they worked with, it looks like they took a lot of concern into the neighborhood to try to have something fit there. I don't know what the local businesses feel like, does that affect them in any way?
Well, they would have been noticed, everybody within six hundred feet of this one received notices and we have not received any correspondence.
Right, so I don't have any questions for staff.
Yeah, I have a question, is there any estimate as to what kind of fees or this might generate to the city or would it be property taxes? What, was there any benefit to the city for this?
In terms of the valuation of the property, if this is considered an improvement, if the assessment goes up on the property, the city may garner a little bit of property tax increase, it'll be a very, very small amount relatively speaking. The city itself would not be getting any lease fees or anything of that nature from this, that would be to the property owner itself.
So Verizon doesn't own this parcel of property?
I don't know.
No, they do not. They will be leasing it and they will, they are conditioned to collect DIFs on this.
And so do we have any idea how long the lease is?
Perhaps the applicant could let us know?
Are you the applicant?
Oh, okay. I thought you were Commissioner Doty's wife. She's hanging in here.
Hi, my name is Sunshine Shoup, I'm with Spectrum Services on behalf of Verizon Wireless.
We need to open the public hearing.
Yeah, let's, yeah, we'll go ahead and, before you speak, I'm sorry, I did have a question, so. Is there a requirement of what the material's going to be on this faux water tank?
We do have samples, yes.
Like, do we have that up or?
We accept hard samples.
This is the leg color?
So is it going to be wood, is it going to be that fake wood, is it going to be metal?
I have that as well.
Sounds like it was metal.
It's the actual material, so.
Can you stand up, Vanna, and show us? Can you just pass it along if you want?
Along the wrapper.
I'm no scientist, but I assume that the gradient ways to go through that.
So it's a ceramic tile?
Yes.
I like to think that the.
Oh, it's fiberglass.
Fiberglass.
Okay, and now, this is what will be laying on the side to look like wood?
Exactly.
Had read my son's fifth grade science project, you would know the answer to that question.
Can I Google it?
So while he's testing that, what is, they are, the project is being surrounded by this pilasters and metal, then there's the wall around the actual site of the tower, there's another one-point-six acres of the one-point-eight. Are they leasing the whole site or what is going on with that?
No, it'd just be the area essentially where the enclosure will be.
So we're actually requiring them to put pilasters and metal around the whole one-point-eight acres just for?
Along the frontage.
The frontage, okay. So my concern is, what are they going to do with the rest of the site? So that Verizon has nothing to do with the rest of the site, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that will come before us if, no matter what the project is. Okay, good, okay. So any other questions? Okay, then we'll go ahead and, well, the applicant can speak during the, the public hearing's open, right? So we don't need to close it? Oh, I'm sorry, pardon, let's open it. Let's open it at nine sixteen. And this was properly noticed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, go ahead and, sorry, go ahead and, your name, please?
Sunshine Shoup.
Sunshine Shoup?
Yes.
Okay. And you represent Verizon or the developer of this or?
Both, Verizon, Spectrum.
Okay. Go ahead, did you have any presentation or comments for us?
If any of the commission have any questions for me that staff has not already answered, I'm happy to answer.
I think that goes back to my question, which is why she stood up in the first place. How long's the lease?
Normally, I'm not familiar with this specific lease at the time, but normally it's a five-year term with four extensions.
So.
A five-year initial, I'm sorry, with four options to extend.
So if at the end of the five years Verizon chooses not to extend it, what happens to this tower?
It'll be removed if we're not, if it's not in proper use anymore, it'll be removed, is that what?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so Verizon would actually own the tower?
Yes.
And then if Verizon leaves the lease, they would take the tower with them?
Correct.
Wouldn't just leave it there to fall apart?
Absolutely not.
Do we have wording that conditions for the removal?
Yes, we do, we have an abandonment condition. In the case of abandonment, what would happen?
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, Sunshine, I just want to thank you for taking this, the design into consideration for the cell tower. Very creative, I haven't seen, well, maybe I don't know if I've seen anything like this because they're disguised, so thank you visually. I think you're right on.
Yes.
Just one question. Have you done any electronic studies to find out whether or not there's going to be any interference with TVs and people's gameboys and cell phones and what have you? As a result of that, you're going to create an electronic bubble. And I was just wanting, have there been any studies made that would mitigate any kind of interference with the other local bubbles that are over there?
The FCC requires that we, that, what the RF frequencies that Verizon runs or any other cell tower for that instance, sorry, does not interfere with anything around it and usually we have conditions that if it does interfere with radio stations or emergency radio frequencies, that we'll have to disconnect our services at that time. But to my knowledge, that has never happened.
Okay, so that's already been planned into the installation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Along those lines, any relation to the, this is so nineteenth century of me, but the radio frequency there in the X-ray equipment for the dentist's office, any cross pollination that goes on there?
I honestly couldn't answer on that, I'm not sure at this time.
Right.
Okay.
How many other co-location companies do you have space for? Now, you've got Verizon on there, can you fit two more, three more?
Completely concealed, we can fit one more, unconcealed, two more.
Okay, and if it was unconcealed, where would they go?
So a lot of the time, when we do three co-locations, two can be inside of the tower, there's enough room for both rad centers in there and then below the catwalk, where the legs are, it would be right there.
Right there, okay. Yeah, that's it that I have on there, that's all the questions I have. Any other questions?
Nothing from me.
Then let's go ahead and call for public testimony. Would you like to speak, Lisa?
We have none at this time.
None at this time, okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at nine-twenty and any thoughts on the commission? On this project?
I'd like to echo what Commissioner Sobek said, that's an outstanding design and I'd like to thank you for setting this up for the city of Menifee. It really is eye-catching and pleasant to look at.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad, number one, it's in a commercial area, so that instead of the residential, I'm great, I like the the water tank design, it is with the country theme of the city and the city's, just to make note, the city's symbol is the only thing that's going to be on there, right?
That is correct.
There'll be no Verizon or anything else on there?
Right, correct.
So that would be kind of an icon for the city, which is, which is nice. I hope you co-locate T-Mobile soon, because you have a very good spot there and it worked right, nice for a few homes. So beyond that, do we have a motion to approve, what are we approving here, these two resolutions?
Commissioner Thomas, would that be accepting a gift?
It's such a gentle nature, no, but I would still encourage this.
Okay, I'd like to make.
I move to adopt Resolution number PC one-five dash two-zero-nine, adopting a mitigated negative declaration.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Doty.
Do I always have to vote yes? I mean first, sorry.
Just alphabetical, that's all.
Okay, that's cool. Yes.
Commissioner Carwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sobek.
Yes.
Chair Thomas.
Yes. Do we have a motion for the second item?
Sure, move to adopt Resolution number PC one-five dash two-one-zero, approving conditional use permit number two thousand thirteen dash one-one-four.
Second. Sorry.
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sobek.
Yes.
Chair Thomas.
Yes. You have your tower. Now, I have to ask you a question, we've approved a tower, gosh, this is one of our first commissioners and this gal flew from the East Coast and we did four hearings, she flew four times, she was madder than a wet hand. So, did you fly from the East Coast?
No, I did not.
Good, okay. Very good.
Let's move to close.
Yep. There. Take a look, do we have any community development director comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'd just like to welcome our new Commissioner Doty to the, to the commission and it's great to have a full commission and we didn't lose a step whatsoever, I think he'll be a very good addition to the, to the commission, so welcome.
Yes, I'd like to mirror that, welcome, glad to have you here, it was a surprise to see you in that room and there. I walked in the conference room and there he was, like, whoa, who is this? So I think you found out what, nine o'clock last night or something?
That was at nine o'clock yesterday morning.
Oh, yesterday morning, okay.
Two o'clock meeting with staff to.
Get up to speed.
Debrief me and hand me a lot of reading material last night.
There you go. Welcome. Yeah, there you go.
And it was a big notebook, too.
Do we have any commissioner comments on anything else?
I have a comment. I, I, we've had some discussion and as businesses have come forward, we've heard from residents about fast food, healthy food and such. Well, I actually overheard that last year, and I don't know the details, that our city adopted some kind of healthy communities thing. And so I was wondering if, to help us make good decisions and to be aware of what our city is trying to do to go towards a healthy community, I was wondering if staff might be willing to come and give us that information and make a report to us so we understand it more.
We, staff can provide that, that information.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have a comment, Commissioner Phillips?
Yes. I have recently been, been given a lot of information concerning homeless population being, a building being cited for homeless people somewhere in the Menifee area. District one was mentioned.
Church of Christ.
Right, and I'm not really fully informed on what's happening, but I understand there's quite a bit of resistance to this and I was just wondering if this is surfaced with staff, either as a concern or as something that's in the works that we should be devoting a couple of brain cells to?
I'm, I have, I'm not aware of anything, but that doesn't mean there hasn't been something there, so if you, there's some additional information or something you want to provide to me, I'd be happy to take that. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I just wanted to close this commission meeting in honor of Wallace Edgerton, former mayor and councilman and in honor of his wife Judy, who is a very sweet lady and has served the city as well. In that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night.